He was my homeroom teacher in sixth grade.
Was he now?
I graduated in seventy-two.
We used to give Doug the business and eighth grade spelling.
Cocaine.
He has no idea.
That would have been over here then.
No, that was at the memorial school, which became the Henry Alcatraz School, right across the way there.
Okay, and this became, and this was just high school?
This was the high school. Because then we had Ridgefield, Wales and Savannah all going to the high school.
All going as?
Going to Monmouth Academy.
Old show, before they built Old Show.
So the center school was operational, the North Monmouth school was operational, and the Cattrell School or the Memorial School.
It was, yeah, because Henry Cattrell was the principal when I was there, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Cattrell was such a nice.
And Marge was a substitute teacher then.
Was that his wife?
His wife, yeah.
No, I'm getting the history.
Doug, I spent my entire summer picking stuff up.
The Hall of Fame there at the Academy.
Her granddad was.
It's just a different form of luggage.
My father, my father was on the school board when her grandfather was superintendent.
And do what you can, and if you want to.
I feel like I don't have enough links in here.
Yeah.
I put it over there though, yeah.
And there's been six generations of my family that have graduated from Marge. Nope, no. And before that, the academy didn't exist, so.
Leanne's mom and I went all through twelve years together.
Yes.
Well, it's six o'clock. Do we want to get going?
Come on, grab another.
It's too late.
We don't know.
I would think if he's not here by now, he may not be coming.
He's not coming.
He's not coming. He's not coming, Donna, so you can put that away. Okay. So we're gonna get started, and I'm gonna kind of kick things off because I reached out to Tanya last year after the budget process and said, hey, what do you think about us getting the two boards together to kind of open up dialogues, maybe do a mid-year check-in, pre-budget, and get conversation going between the two boards? And Tanya thought that was a great idea, reached out to all of you, and I reached out to Doug, and here we all are this evening. So there's no formal agenda for tonight. I've been in this process in another life, which shall not be mentioned, but where it works really well to bring the school board and the governing body of the community together once or twice a year, just to talk and see what's going on, and if there are any issues, each side make each other aware of the others. It is a good time maybe to talk about if you know what budget things might be coming up in this next year, for us to let you know what we're looking at, you let us know what you're looking at. But basically, it's just an attempt to get us all to talk and get us together. So no formal presentations to be made. And Tanya, I don't know if you want to kick things off for you? That sounds all good. I don't know if everybody knows everyone here, including the board members that are online. So I see at least three of them up there. So the one who waved is Jeff Bickford. I don't know if you can hear him.
Preston.
He's muted. He's from Dresden. There's Don Gallagher coming on.
From Hollowell.
And then we got Mark Pearson.
Yep, from Richmond.
Richmond.
And Russ from Richmond is on.
Is Russ on?
Yep.
Are they able to communicate, or do you have to individually take them off mute if they wanted, or can they take themselves off? I think they can take themselves off mute. Usually.
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear Russ.
That's your ass.
Good. Yep, I think they can unmute themselves. I just wanted to make sure you could talk if you wanted to. Awesome. And I did bring a little handout. I did figure out how to show them. They haven't seen this yet, so Steffi and I were trying to, because I'm trying, she's new, so I'm trying to help her also learn the process, but we created the draft, which was going to go to the board at the next meeting in December of our timeline, because I know one of the things last year, people were wishing that there was a earlier process for us, but I think there's a lot that we do that would be good for you to know about, but we actually don't get hard information, and it's actually only a draft in February from the state. And then in March, the end of March, we get the final from the state. So we're kind of, we do what we do, but we're not really sure what's going to happen till late. So our budget process really has to be short, but there are lots of steps we do ahead. So I brought a copy for everyone if you guys want to pass this out.
Sorry, Tanya, I've had my hand up, but I know that your back is to me. Can you send that to us for those, via email for those of us that are joined by Zoom? Thank you.
I wasn't sure if I could. Here's some extras. And so one, let me just beat up her. Can we save one for Tim, just so that he has one for, does he have a mailbox? I'm sorry, I came from another place trying to transfer a kid to hockey practice. And just so everyone knows, the speakers were above you.
Okay, it wasn't.
Well, I think the tendency is because you're thinking that you're here in the room, no one else, but we've got people who are listening out there in Zoom land. Oh, now it's, oh, you know, I don't have internet here. Right behind you, Tanya. Did you guys meet everyone here?
Three of them. Which one do I pick?
Okay, just want to make sure.
And we'll let you.
I think I've known Leanne for a really long time. I remember the name of the school ride when I first.
Try Kids Club and see if that one comes up. I don't know if town of Monmouth is an option.
It didn't show up. It said Kilt Art or something like that.
No, I think it's the, it says Kids Club and then Twenty Mustangs Twenty. That's what I have.
I don't think that's Kids.
That's the one I had to use. Yeah, that's the one I had to use. That's the one I had to use in last year.
We just use it for meetings.
Just meeting spaces.
I wondered if like a Zoom screen shared what I was thinking.
Offices, they kind of, they were at Compton Hall, they spent for a little bit.
We repurposed this.
This building when you got it back from the RSU, yeah.
And it's got a future life on the other side for our rec department to grow, hopefully. A couple of offices for them. Yeah, that's why I just got it. Bingo.
Community rec.
Yeah, while they're getting ready to ask you about
Takes sense.
joining us. Get in, Tanya. Yes. Yeah, it's.
No, it's on my calendar.
I thought somebody else was going to talk about that, but if you maybe could ask.
Oh, but this was not.
We're looking for someone that's going to be present.
That was six years.
Yeah. I know our new town manager is.
Justin, yep.
Justin.
Well, when I was here, this building was like not this building and it was.
When I was here, there was no doing. Wasn't here.
Right. But we weren't sure.
Man buildings.
Organizing.
I'm just here before it was this exact building.
Well, I know, but I didn't know if Doug was going to go. You weren't here last day and tree lighting.
They need someone to, they need someone who knows every book. I only know like fifty percent. I think you would probably be a better diplomat.
Steve's office was here when he was the superintendent.
I did actually did that with Linda. Had a lot of lives. First, she first. You have four.
Good building, good building.
Yeah, it's just. So we're looking for someone to walk around and introduce them to the people in the community.
I was working on it before.
A lot of younger people because they're going to have their kids for Santa, but that's.
This is mail.
Somewhere in your timeline, are you tracking the fact that the town needs to have the school ballot? Eighty-five days before the election. I was, the election's the fourteenth this year.
Yes.
So I don't know if the timeline works perfectly. I have it April fifteenth as you're getting it. It's so that you could send it to be printed.
It's going to be present.
Is it too much time? I just need forty-five days. A minimum of forty-five. There's not like a other end window. Okay, that was, that's good. So, yeah, so I kept it, and April vacation is just after that, so I thought that worked well to do what we did last year and try to get it by the end of that. The other thing, last year, we had this other yellow band that says April fifth with the board, select boards and the city councilors. That meeting was actually in like the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. It was rate squished. So I backed it up a week because I thought that was what I was hearing when people were expressing concern last year. I don't know if that's enough, or if it's, because I was trying to balance, we have to do so much in such a short time that we need to be, have enough to actually have stuff to share with you, but at the same time, we need to listen, and so it was a catch twenty-two. So I was put that on the draft to see if that would work. One of the things that I know we've talked about in the past, and a couple of years ago, when I was just coming to the select board meetings and would listen to other people share information, is I think it would be really helpful, and certainly all our meetings are public on both ends, right? So I just want to say that everyone's got a public meeting. But if there was somebody that the select board, one or two, I mean, it's up to you guys, you're all welcome to go, but if you could at least identify one person that had interest and availability to regularly attend, that might help at least regularly have ongoing information, regularly be able to share things that are coming up for you and where things are and just walking through. I know just, and for the school, this budget here is so complicated with that formula. I know I learn something every time I go, and that's outside of me now, just being on the school board, but I just learned there's so many things. But it might just be helpful for at least this, that particular season. It's a lot more meetings because we meet on like the opposite Thursdays that you typically meet on Wednesdays. So I'm not, I'm saying it's not easy for sure. But if there is at least two that could alternate or participate, or one, that might be beneficial and helpful. Instead of waiting until the end of the process, because there's so much learning and questions at the beginning of it, because at the end, it's just number plugging. At the beginning, it's when we try to figure out, you know, how did all this come together? That's what I've learned anyway in the last few years.
It's just very difficult. I've tried doing that.
It's difficult. It's time consuming.
Travel all around the district for when that meeting's arranged.
Do you have Zoom?
Yes, our meetings are Zoom now.
Okay.
Well, our subcommittee meetings are Zoom, like, and then our regular school board meetings right now are Zoom too, but even in the future, when we go live, our subcommittee meetings will also be Zoom, and our regular meetings are, have a Zoom option.
So hybrid.
Yeah, regular meetings are hybrid. Thank you. And then subcommittee meetings are Zoom.
Basically the same thing we do.
No, yeah, that's right. It's great though, because people get to participate and listen, even if they can't show, right? So and all our subcommittee meetings are going to be Zoom for everybody. So it's really good to be able to see people up close on a computer and not.
And some people travel so they can zoom in from anywhere in the world.
The participation is way up.
Yeah, it's helpful. I mean, you got, you did it, you were, I don't know where you were, some tropical place, warm.
Oh, I was, I took a vacation.
Great. I mean, but it's, but it's, that's the benefit of it. I mean, honestly, it's been, it's great.
Yeah, and I read the minutes when Linda, when Tanya sends them to Linda and Linda sends them, I read through the minutes and trying to keep up with what happened at the meeting, at least I'm informed on that, and so.
Sure, like your minutes, you don't always get all the.
Well, exactly, exactly. I mean, at least it gives you the kind of the outline of what went on without the chatter sometimes.
Did anybody happen to see the article on the front page of the Sun Journal this morning about the potential for electricity rates to increase by fifty to sixty percent?
I did. Nice timing for that. Yeah.
So I was just curious if, if you knew off the top of your head, what, what the electric bill is for the RSU.
No, I need the business manager's help with that. I don't have that memorized. Tanya, didn't you say that you had made arrangements for the RSU to join into some community solar? Yes, we do have the community solar thing underway. We have a contract for that. So that helps some, but it's not going to insulate us a hundred percent.
So I mean, it's, it's not. It's just a possibility, but it would be, I think, good to, to identify what the potential impact of a fifty to sixty percent increase would be to the budget, and then how much offset you'd have from the participation in the solar project, and then potentially what that would, that would all mean if it happened.
Yeah, we are in this, in a solar project already.
No, but I mean, what, what the, what the total impact would be, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The delta is.
Yeah.
Once you put everything together.
Yeah, we were just talking about that today because of this.
Hi, this is Dawn. I just wanted to say, you know, for this, I used to work for the Public Utilities Commission, and on the CMP thing, there's, there's two different fees. There's a transmission fee and a distribution fee, and they're talking about the distribution fee going up, you know, forty to sixty percent, but that's actually only about a thirty percent component of the bill. Not that it's not a lot, but it's, it's only a partial amount of the total bill. And I, I think the average residential bill can see an increase of about sixteen dollars, so you could probably back into what we would see on the, on the electric side, but they still have to go through a rate case and you know, they.
Excuse me, I thought it was the generation cost that was going to increase by fifty to sixty percent.
I'm sorry, did I, did I say generation or distribution?
No, you said, you said distribution, and I thought the article said it was the generation.
What I meant was, what I meant was the, the generation, which is not the, the biggest piece of it. The distribution is the highest piece, but it's still a lot. I mean, don't get me wrong. It's, it's just that, you know, you can't just take your bill and say, well, it's going to go up forty percent. It's only that about a thirty to forty percent of the bill goes to generation and then the portion of that. But we had, you know, we had, Gordon's probably not there, but we also did some kind of economies of scale where we were pre-buying oil and trying to buy into as much generation or transmission as we could with various communities as well. So I'm not sure that it worked. I'm not sure that it worked out perfectly well, but we did have a component that we were working with the towns on trying to get, you know, fuel oil deliveries at least, and, and I don't know about the gas, but anyway, I, I think that's a really good idea, and it is something that we've done in the past, and Gordon has continued.
Actually, I heard some information today about some pre-buying. They're trying to look at those things because, you know, there's all these announcements about inflation and everything, so they are looking at those right now. Are you not in the consortium that we're in with main power options? I thought you were. We might be. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Yeah, because we, so we buy our number two fuel oil, our propane and our gasoline as part of a group to help save some money.
Or thirty-eight is part of the RSU thirty-eight.
I think the City of Augusta is, is well, part of that group.
So I see the first step in, in the, the budget timeline is to lock in the student enrollment count, and that was done.
That was done.
At the beginning of the school year.
October.
October one. Yeah, fifteen, okay.
Well, it's on the October first count, but it didn't have to be certified until.
Gotcha. So how does our current enrollment RSU-wide this year compare with the previous year?
It's up seventeen students.
And, and how does that compare for just Monmouth?
I'd have to get out their chart and look if I didn't.
Probably just a few. I mean, we, we saw it's been a slow decline over the last few years. I think last year was probably the biggest one, but some of that was having some students unenroll because of COVID. So I think we're probably seeing some rebound of that this year.
I'm, I'm also curious to know, you know, when the state promised, when we started the process of building the new school in Monmouth, there was the expectation that there would be a small bump in enrollment simply because new schools tend to attract more families to the community. And so I'd be curious to see if that actually played out in the data.
You know, I'm really curious too, because you know what I'm seeing? I'm seeing that we've had our new school open during this, right? So it's, again, it's a COVID new opening. But a lot of the housing market, how the housing market played in, we have a lot of out-of-staters that have come in, and they're not necessarily permanent out-of-staters. Some of them are, not all of them. So I think it would be really interesting, I don't know that we have that data now, but in the next couple of years, to look at what part of the data in terms of the housing market here in Monmouth are some people that are not here full-time or that are here on a second home, and how that is impacted, because getting a house here in Monmouth is crazy.
Yeah, which is nowhere to go on the market.
I mean, like, I mean, it's so before it gets on the market, if you're looking at Leanne.
You don't go on the market.
I mean, I've had people reach out to me and ask me if I'd sell my house. I'm like.
Kind of need a house.
I don't want to be homeless.
Where am I going to go? But I mean, I just think that that's played a part. So I don't even know that. Well, historically, when you look at the data, and it shows that there's a bump in enrollment after a new school opens, right? I'm not sure that that, we're going to have that same reflection, or that we can even say, because of the strangeness of the situation, that we can even say, hey, that's because of, it's kind of an anomaly because of, so.
Yeah, you almost have to depend on building houses right now in order to
Right.
have people come to town, right? Not so they can find land.
So I can tell you, Monmouth Memorial's down one, and Monmouth Academy's down two.
So it's pretty minimal.
And, yeah, and then from twenty twenty to here, which is the pre-COVID October, it was a fall of six to last year, and a fall of twenty-eight.
Yeah, so the twenty-eight, I'm sure, was a substantial blow to.
It was the, you know, homeschooling, but the, the DOE eighty-two seventy-nine averages two years at a time. So you hit it halfway, and then it comes back up. So it just smooths it out. It's not quite as steep.
Right, okay.
When I was at school two weeks ago, I didn't really see a lot of new names. I saw kind of the same kids when I was there doing the varnish, so, you know, I didn't think that that was in flux, so.
It's hard when you only have, you know, when you have ten or fifteen new kids in a district, or ten or fifteen less kids in a district. It really doesn't mean any change to your staff population. One kid here and one kid there, you know, you're not hiring.
See, and that's, that to me is a flaw in the, in the, the fundamental flaw in the state's, part of the state's formula for funding education, because they go strictly in that piece by student enrollment, and that doesn't impact staffing. You have to have a large decrease in student, or increase in student enrollment before you actually impact the staff. Right, because of the class size, min-max that you, you really need to support, so.
Right.
If anybody could get somebody in Augusta to really take a look at that and realize that, that, that that's a real pain for everybody involved, then it would be helpful because it, it just, it penalizes the, the folks that are trying to to manage the budget and those people that are actually supporting the budget.
Those are the ones that are actually more vulnerable when you start talking about things like nursing, you know, it goes by the same formula. And we could have one student move to the, to a school, and we have to hire a nurse because of one student. They don't factor any of that in. That could happen in a couple of different schools, and we get paid, you know, money for three nurses, and we actually have to have six.
Then the students aren't, aren't taken into consideration. And I think over the next couple of years, we're really going to see the social emotional needs of students increase in part due to this transition back from COVID. We have twenty-five, yeah, we have twenty-five more special ed identified kids that should have been last year's district. Right, so that's just a special education population, but if we're talking about the the increase in needs around anxiety, around just that anxiety is the big one. And I know that our, our social, our school counselors are tapped with what they're dealing with, you know, and just trying to support students and getting back in and support families and referring to social workers, and so that formula doesn't factor into how you determine. Oh, yeah. I'm posting, not that I'm talking about my experience or anything.
I mean, Jeff's daughter is, well, she's kindergarten teacher, but she's doing now this year, she's doing first grade because she's cycled up with her kids. So, you know, she, the stuff that she tells me is just blows my mind. I mean, I can't even believe, you know.
Yeah, it's just reading and writing.
Well, it's not just that, but the, the, how she even managed to do anything last year, and what you teach remotely to a kindergartner.
Well, yeah, really astounding.
A flashlight, you know, strobe light, I should say, a strobe light attention span. I mean, I, you know, it's mind-blowing, so.
The other thing I was going to ask about was the, the when the teacher contracts, when the contracts come up for negotiation again, this year, so there's, there's really upward pressure just from a, a small business owner in Naples, has a little convenience store, right? Had a lady that was working out as a great employee, paying her, I think it was eighteen dollars an hour, which is, you know, great pay for it. She left him to go to Burger King for twenty-one dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So with that kind of upward pressure on wages, I expect there's going to be some upward pressure on.
Now, it was, you know, a few years ago, the state passed a new minimum salary for teachers of forty thousand dollars, and we really had to bump up our bottom levels to meet that. There's no new law this year, but we, there was that upward pressure, certainly then.
And next year is when it hits the forty, right? So that's, next year, we'll have to raise our rate to that.
Well, my expectation though is that, I'm just trying to say that the, the market upward pressure will, will override lots of, you know, supply and demand. You get teachers to, I mean, there's obviously a certain level of commitment to a, to a field that is a special field, but with its personal rewards, but just from an economic point of view, if someone can go work at Burger King for twenty-one dollars an hour, you know, and make that forty thousand dollars without any of the responsibilities that a teacher has, or the educational commitments a teacher has to have, then I expect there'll be some upward pressure on salary just because of what's going on outside.
Well, on all of the, on all of the hourly positions that we have, it, we're already feeling that it's hard to get people. And that we just, you know, used to be considered well, so I'm trying to play up the benefit side of it, because some of those jobs, they might pay more, and we pay less, but we have benefits, and they don't, and that's an expense that they don't normally have to cover. So that's an angle, but there is a bill that carried over from the legislature making it all right now, the way it's proposed, is a minimum sixteen dollars an hour for any school employee, and who, we all know how those bills change because of that market thing. That could get jacked up and then pass to even a higher rate, and for some of our employees, that does mean a substantial. And you very rarely can just bring up the bottom, because everybody wants to go up too, and that's really hard.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Regardless of what the minimums are, you may find yourself in a position where the minimum doesn't attract the people that you have to have staff the positions you have staff.
We're already there.
So you can't plan on the minimum, right?
Right.
I mean, from my point of view, what we should be looking at is what's real, not what we'd like, and what we'd like, obviously, is to, to hold the line on from budget point of view, and, but then operationally, there are certain things that you don't really have a lot of control over that you have to do. So personally, I understand that. I expect that that will be something that will play into how you have to formulate your budget plans going forward.
So what percentage of your budget is, is, you know, salaries, labor, labor costs, eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent?
I mean, the budget didn't go up this past year when we put it forward. I mean, it did, but it was those costs that were associated with requirements. I mean, we didn't have any wiggle room. I mean, one of the things that I would try to figure out and brainstorm is, okay, if this budget doesn't pass, like, what are we going to cut? And the only thing, again, I could honestly think of is, okay, maybe transportation for extracurricular activities. Parents have to transport themselves. I mean, it was really that tight. I mean, there wasn't any additional, you know, additional, additional anything that we were trying to do, yet the need for the support, as we've already identified, for the emotions, you know, social, emotional plus academic support that students, some students have needed, even now. None of that was buffered in there, and a lot of any services that we are having are actually provided through the ESAR grants and the grants that we're having, and those aren't lasting forever. So we're really, and I think.
and I think Tanya just said, we have two unions negotiating currently this year, and so that's gonna hurt. I I think it's gonna be, it's gonna show an impact and it'll hurt for the same reason as you just mentioned. I mean, bus drivers, you know, custodial staff, those have been really hard to get. And people are leaving to go to other districts. You know, my teachers, I mean, you move south and get higher salaries in some of those schools compared to here. And so.
And you just look at the impacts that have happened, you know, this week. Of course, we're so on the edge with a lot of these positions that when you have people that are out, you have to shut down the school. You can't get kids to school because you don't have enough bus drivers.
Feed them until you're not allowed to have school.
Yeah.
Well, even our 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 soccer season for the middle school, we had some uh some games that had to be delayed a little bit because the the uh visiting team had to wait till the buses were done doing their route to get a driver in a bus to bring the the team over to play the game. So there's there's pressure all the way around. It's um, so uh how, are there any funds from COVID relief that are able to be allocated to help with this situation that you know of?
Uh, just the add-ons, the our hands are tied for doing it, like, we couldn't take money from them and replace the money in our budget, pay for stuff we'd been paying for that's not allowed. So we, and a good percentage of it needed to be for student supports for uh learning. That's why we had the RTI process and the tutors and those other folks to try to help with that. That was a big chunk of what we did. Um, and then the building and facility stuff they let us do, which is great, you know, improving the replacing windows and ventilation systems, putting ventilation systems where there weren't any, all that kind of stuff. Um, and that's good. Those one-time uh facilities costs that take something off the plate that's down the road. It's like you won't know what you're saving, but you really are kind of saving. That is the that's the best way to use money to offset taxpayer needs in the future, but.
Because we have a ten-year, you know, a ten-year capital plan and we couldn't use it for stuff that was in our plan for that budget year. We could use it for stuff that wasn't on there. So like she was saying, those ventilation system or systems and window replacement, those were on our, you know, horizon. So when we take them off there, then it frees up that money, you know, for the future.
So you did have some positive impact.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so in our ARPA funds, when they first started talking about it, we were very, very limited on what we were gonna be able to use the money for. In fact, we were even questioning if we were gonna be able to use ours. So for a community like Monmouth that doesn't own its water um and sewer lines, that's one of the things that you can use the ARPA funds for. Well, that, we don't own it, so we can't do that. So one of the other things was, one of the big things was broadband expansion. Well, the state has made that a priority. And the governor's saying, don't use your ARPA funds for broadband expansion because we're mapping the state and we've got a big pot of money. So we're looking at the ARPA money saying, and we're saying, but we can't use it for operating. But now they're starting to say, well, you might be able to do things like, you know, you could expand the town office. If it, if you can relate it to the fact that you're trying to spread your employees out so they're not breathing each other's air and putting in air purification and stuff like that. But still, that doesn't help. I mean, it would help if we were going to do that anyway, and then we wouldn't put it, be putting it on the taxpayers. But it doesn't help with the operating budget.
Right, and they don't want it to. God knows we have sewer needs. Coming from somebody who's on the sewer line and just had to listen to that.
Yeah, no, we were, we had to get creative on some things and we were able to get a lot through and some people have some heartburn over that, you know, why did you, why did you spend money on X item? The option was to leave the money on the table.
Right, and the window to get that stuff in was really short. It got better later in there, but that first round, I mean, the time to get all up, it was
Literally like two weeks.
It was right at the same time that everyone's trying to figure out how to deliver education to students in in school and out of school and two days a week and it was the, it was a perfect storm of trying to spend that money.
And we got no money. We had no money for COVID expenses and we just this week got an email from um Kennebec Valley Emergency Management that we can now put in our expenses that we incurred last year. So we've got like ten thousand dollars worth of expenses. But it'll go to the general fund. I mean, we put um glass up at the front office. We put glass up at the library to protect the employees, all the PPE that we purchased, all of that stuff. We, it came out of our pockets and we had to do it because we needed to protect people, the public and the employees.
Yeah.
But we never got any money for it.
Wow.
But now maybe, and that's a maybe. We don't know that we'll get reimbursed for the ten thousand, but we're hoping. Well, it's, and I wonder if it's county just, you know, or what, because some of the towns that I've worked with, they were getting, they were, they put in for their grant right away. They they did get reimbursed for some. It was a big delay though.
Yep.
So. And now they're saying, and before we couldn't put in for the glass in the front office, but now they're saying, if you put glass up at the clerk's office or wherever, you can now put that in. So we hope.
So uh, tell me a little bit about the state, the history of the state subsidy that the RSU receives, just so we can get a picture of you know, if eighty-five percent of your budget is as labor, okay, and I mean, the the reality on this side of the table is that two-thirds of our budget goes to the RSU. Okay, so we ultimately, as a board, have control over one-third of our financial destiny.
Right. Uh, and probably a big chunk of yours, well, maybe not as much as labor because you have sand and salt and
Labor is a substantial portion, right, right. So if two-thirds of our budget is the RSU, tell me what, what portion is your budget from the state, first of all? Um, seems to me like it's a substantial portion. I don't know the exact
Well, there's
Ratio.
So so the eighty-two seventy-nine is the magic uh formula that uh is how the state determines funding. And um it's for essential programs and services. So there, this whole, that whole thing is based on what the state sees as the funding that should be required to run your school district. Right, and so the law was passed, I forget, two thousand nine, ten, that the state was gonna fund fifty-five percent of what that amount is. That didn't happen until last year for the first time. So we were always closer to fifty per, fifty fifty. It doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars difference that five percent. But we've never been able to operate based on what that EPS formula is.
Right.
So you have the the state subsidy, which is supposed to be fifty-five percent. The other forty-five percenters, what towns are supposed to contribute in order to get the fifty-five percent. And then there's a delta to get to what we actually need as a minimum throughout the schools. So the state subsidy, foundation allocation, and then what they call local additional, are the three parts.
And so last year the state paid fifty percent?
Fifty-five.
That's not, so there's, that's not exactly, uh, because I, that's the average. Let me just look. The eighty-two seventy-nine I have right here, and I think it's a sixty forty split.
That's all public information too, so you can look that up on DOE's website and look at the past ones and current ones.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's uh forty local, sixty state, but that's of the essential only. That's not the additional.
That's what the state takes from us for foundation allocation.
Right.
Right.
And then we don't have any control over that. That's just is what it is. It's the mill that they set the mill rate, and that's what it is. We don't have any control over that.
So what if, so they recognize uh for uh essential, let me just see the total. The total they recognize is twenty-three million. Uh, I should round it to twenty-four because twenty-three nine seventy-six. That's what they recognize as essential.
Okay.
And uh they give us fourteen and a half.
Fourteen point five, and it's been pretty level.
No, it's, it, well, it started to come up the last couple of years, but for a lot of years, it was actually trending down, right?
Right, right.
And then since we switched administrations, that's.
And then the local additional portion.
And I can bring up, I was, I opened the slide so I could try to answer some of this because it's hard to remember it off the top of your head.
It's actually pretty small compared to the total bill.
Right, this is around thirty-two million, right?
Yeah, maybe local additional, it's what, four or five million?
Uh, which is pretty small compared to the total bill.
Right.
Yeah, I I think when Tanya mentioned um they only allocate what they deem is essential is really an important part because they might say that your teacher uh student ratio should be one for every twenty or whatever it happens to be. Or the, as John was mentioning earlier about school nurses, I think we're allocated, you know, two point five nurses, but we've got ten or eleven schools. And someone had mentioned earlier going to the legislature and saying, you know, basing it on students at X day or whatever. Um, I know there's been some interest in having folks contact legislators to say, even if we don't increase the percentage above fifty-two or fifty-five, if we can get more flexibility in um that essential. And currently, you know, as is typical, everybody is treated the same. But if you said we have an area where nurses, more nurses are needed or a higher percentage because we're so spread out, wouldn't it be cool if we could have some flexibility in that? And I know that Senator Hickman um is interested in doing things like that. So it it seems as if one of the areas that we could work together as school and towns is submit something that would be not only Monmouth, but might be all of our communities with the RSU and say, and identify here are some areas that we'd like additional flexibility for funding. Thanks.
That's, and I mentioned that earlier, that that's what I see as a fundamental uh short or flaw in the in the funding formula, the way it stands right now. And so I I think it would be great if we could work together to come up with a letter to send uh to our representatives and and maybe just to the, to the legislature, legislature's leadership, the House and the the Senate's leadership and say, these are the challenges that we face because of the way the formula is structured right now. And we'd like to see some more flexibility in these specific areas. And so you're right, we wouldn't be asking for a general increase. We'd be just asking for them to uh to see the reality of what smaller systems face when it comes to um the the number of facilities that they have to staff and and then the uh student head count um how that that small fluctuation can have a big impact and have absolutely no impact on the staff that's needed.
Yeah, to that point, if if we could find specific examples. And one of the reasons for doing that might be that they have a pot of money or a percentage or whatever that uh can be allocated for specific school districts that can point out certain things. And that way then, you know, because it would be, there's always unintended consequences if we start messing with the whole law and they don't want to do that. But if we could convince them to have some flexibility and some funding available for districts who'll apply for it that have some kind of special requests or needs for having more than just the essential that's allocated at a set percentage across the board for all school systems.
That's a great idea, I think. But and and if the administration would be the best people to uh to identify where those areas would be and point out some examples.
Yeah, last year there were think, uh, I don't know if it was last year, I guess it was two years ago, there were think tanks and I did participate in those um to, they were thinking about reevaluating the formula and maybe making adjustments. And uh class sizes, um availability of teachers at different parts of the state, cost of living at different parts of the state, all those kind of things were brought up. Transportation was brought up. I feel like this district might be like average though, so it might not help us, but some districts have many more miles to go and others have less. And so if they adjusted that, some towns would lose, some towns would gain, you know, um.
I think along with that, though, is understand the uniqueness of the district. In that most districts with two thousand kids don't have three elementary schools, three middle schools, three high schools. And because of that, uh where you might have just one high school, one nurse is fine. But we aren't talking about one high school. And so we have unique coverage issues, especially with some of those singletons in buildings or in a case of, it just, you know, how many math teachers do you have? Because sometimes there's a catch there and you, you aren't, they aren't evenly distributed these students across each of these schools. So I think as you craft that letter, crafting it with the intent that we're a very unique RSU that has multiple high schools, that has multiple, you know, that, yes, we do have two thousand students. That puts us up in the size of some good-sized districts. But if you look at the other good-sized districts like that, you look at a, at an Auburn or you look at um uh, if you look at a Wyndham or Westbrook that are gonna have similar sizes, they're siloed a lot differently than what we are. That's really important as you break up that formula. One librarian to cover X number of kids works great when you have one middle school with five hundred kids in it.
In one library.
But we, we have eight libraries that need coverage. We have eight nurses that need coverage. We have eight. Uh, again, multiply, that's something that you don't find twenty-five miles away in in Auburn, who have the same number of, it's a similar number of kids. But a much different configuration as far as schools and needs. I think that, so it's, is that crafted, that's something to take into consideration, which increases that local contribution that we have to have. Because you don't want to put a kid in a school that they're disadvantaged because the numbers don't work right for you. So I think that's really important to to consider.
And advocating for them to open it all up again because it's a whole different world, you know. Food service, if you're doing universal food, their formulas don't include the manpower. They're feeding more kids than they've ever felt fed before because everybody's eat, well, not everybody, but a lot more people are eating the food that's available. And then um sanitation supplies and and that kind of thing. And there are increasing number of mandates of you know, using the personal hygiene stuff and having that provided in schools as mandates about that coming down the pike. So there's things we never had to pay for before that we have to pay for now that are just normal human needs.
I think we had a discussion once about the food services that, you know, it's hard to argue that free lunch for everybody is is a bad thing. But what most people don't understand is that we lose money on it because we don't have the uh, we don't have people paying that aren't on free and reduced lunch pay anymore or all the à la carte sales. That they used to balance our budget. We lose all that. And so every meal that we provide, we get a state reimbursement, but it doesn't cover our costs. All we have for income, we just lose money every month. So.
Of course, the alternative is probably less uh desirable because then you're saying you can't have that food because you can't pay for it or you haven't paid your bill or whatever. And and then you're saying that to a child when it's really the parents' issue, right?
No, I mean, certainly what we're doing is the most beneficial for the kids.
Right.
The funding just needs to catch up to it.
Well, and it's really odd too this year. I mean, you can get, you know, as long as you get a fruit, a vegetable and a milk. But if you don't take the milk, nothing else is paid for. Like, you have to take every po- component and I don't know, you have to trash it.
And then you have to throw it away.
Those USDA standards.
The stamp, right, it is standard. Those are standards that were our nutrition staff are required to, you know, because I had this conversation with my own kid. I'm like, I don't care. Take the milk and give it to someone else. I had this conversation, I had nausea, my milk is drink, I don't care. The milk, and give it to somebody else. But I mean, it, but but some people don't know that. You don't know that. You know, the staff are like, no, you have to take this. Well, I don't want it. Then it's like, there's a trash can or it's just really frustrating that there's so little, I understand why, right? They want to make sure that everyone's getting a nutritious, they have opportunity to get a nutritious meal and you want to make sure. But on the, on the flip side, there's, there's no flexibility for staff to use common sense or judgment given the circumstances.
Or the kids, you know, uh lactose intolerant.
There, you know, there is something that gets you out of it if you're lactose intolerant, but you have to prove it because I ran into that.
Nobody in the federal government is smart enough to make them write a mandate that it has common sense attached to it.
It's just the lack of flexibility.
It used to be if you took
It used to be if you took the apple and didn't want the apple, there was a tray, you could put it, someone else could, like, could take it. No, thank you. Yeah, now I don't think they can do that.
It happens in Hannaford, but it can't happen at school, you know?
And it is really kind of, it's crazy. And I think, you know, one of the other things, I don't know how this is gonna pan out for negotiations, but our contracts right now don't allow for flexibility to meet the COVID needs of our staff either. And we're, we kind of, I find myself going, oh my God, this is so crazy that we can't do this, but, you know, if you have a negotiated contract, you gotta stick by that, you know, and it doesn't allow flexibility for some of our hourly employees. We run into challenges there, we run into challenges with just wanting to give somebody like a half a day, like cut them some slack because they're overstretched over, we just don't have that. By the time you put in the, the state laws for how many days off we can have, or how many days in school we have to have. Plus, what counts as a remote day, which I just learned by the way, so it's on, it's on my mind, right? What counts as a remote day? Because you can only have a remote day under these certain rules and have that be counted as an actual school day. Uh, it's just, it's really hard to take all the rules and regulations that are normally state, but also federal and put them together and still meet the needs of our communities. When you're talking about, you have Dresden way over there, Richmond way over there, Haldale in the middle, Monmouth way over here. And you could get weather patterns or needs drastically different over two counties.
Three counties.
Is it three counties?
Three counties, right, right, right.
Yeah, for, sorry, three counties.
Yeah.
But I mean, those are just the little details that I think are important for people to you know, you don't really think about them, they're not in your, in your face.
You know, to that point, um, you know, we became an RSU, basically, you know, under Governor Baldacci. Uh, the RSUs were created and in fact mandated, and you're supposed to get penalized if you didn't come into an RSU with about at least twenty-five hundred students. So it might be interesting to use as one of the reasons why we need the flexibility is to maintain associations such as RSUs. And pointing out some of those things like weather patterns or whatever it happens to be, or the flexibility may give some, um, kind of rationale and justification for either the DOE uh, or, or the legislature, but, but particularly the DOE. I mean, if we went in and said we want to try this as a pilot and, uh, so that way we're not tying anybody's hands, that we're making everything per- permanent and that they're gonna have to do it for other districts, but offer to be kind of a pilot district to put some of these innovations in place.
Tried to create an emergency bus driver endorsement on people with CDLs today. Kind of got shot down, but they're taking my ideas and they're sending it all over the world, so that's good.
Well, you know, some, um, some areas, I just read that, um, you know, some states have programs. Um, I know Colorado is, I, I, in another life I do this sort of thing, but primarily with healthcare, but in Colorado, for example, they're using COVID relief funds to actually give bonuses uh, to classifications of personnel that are in demand. Substitute teachers, bus drivers, things like that. And I know, I know it takes effort to do, yet, um, and if we don't do it, we know what the alternatives are, so it would be great if we kind of looked at, okay, here are some of the challenges, but trying to overcome those.
Tanya, do you have anything looming big that, you know, whether it's building wise or anything like that that you know is gonna?
The most recent thing is, uh, our financial system uh, that does payroll and all of our finances, uh, it is, uh, not going to be serviced anymore next year, so it's kind of going defunct and outdated. So we have to put a new system in place. Uh, we're planning to go with the same company who has a new service. Um, that company's product is well above any of the other options out there. And, um, because we've had a longstanding relationship with them, we're trying to negotiate away a lot of this one-time startup fees. Uh, but, uh, I think the, the typical amount of startup fees is another eighty thousand on top of what you annually have during the changeover year. So that's like, if we can't negotiate, that's worst-case scenario, but that's a big bill for something like that. But it's essential, um, and the program that we're looking at has so many features that can help. Right now, manpower is stretched really, really thin, uh, and it can create a lot of efficiencies and cut out a lot of wasted time that, uh, worst-case scenario, I think, could easily make it so that people don't get burnt out and leave. And we have less overtime, um, and then, you know, hopefully down the road will reduce the amount of manpower we actually need.
Sounds like, uh, we could figure out some benefit from, uh, to COVID tracing or COVID something or another and get some COVID funding for it.
I don't know if it, I, I will think creatively and see if I can, it's a good idea, but it's something you have to have anyway and you already have, so it'll be a hard sell, but I can try.
Well, I, you know, it, 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 it's always about how you write it up, you know?
That's right, touching less paper, passing less germs. Honey, is that anything like the regional center can, I mean, isn't there a, a way for the regional center, whatever we call that, I don't know, to, um, utilize a centralized or partnered financial system?
I don't think it would be wise to have one financial system with all three districts' information in it, I don't think that would make sense.
You can't silo it out?
Uh, not very well, and, and there's a lot of security issues and things like that too, um, and then the uploads to the state.
Do this stuff, where you submit your stuff to payroll companies that issue payroll, right? I mean, these are big organizations. There's all these, oh, I'm not saying you, not your own HR, I'm just saying when you talk about time cards, payroll, a lot of that's electronic. I mean, that could cut out a lot of processes there, if it was just fair.
It's security and it's the downloads and uploads and all those other kinds of things that, that would prevent that.
So what company do you use?
Uh, Tyler Technology.
It's the name of their product?
Uh, the, the prior product is ADS and the new one is called iVisions.
I know the company I work for has a lot of employees, they, and they use a product called Dayforce. And they went to that because it allows them to, with a very small number of people to manage a very large corporate workforce.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it's all on the web.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just think that that's something worth exploring, because, I mean, I, you know, our university system has now unified all seven, eight, well, now law school's eight, plus the system, nine separate budgets, and they still remain somewhat separate, but it's all unified and payroll is one. And so, and I think payroll consists of like three people. But I just think that there's ways of keeping things confidential and private and other things to consider when you talk about those dollars, there's a lot of dollars associated with, especially a lot, so many cloud surfaces these days.
Yeah.
That you can just explore.
I know the other districts have done that, like that are municipal districts, that they've used the same as the town. The problem is there's one set of setting that's a mother setting for everyone.
Configurations.
Configurations and, and schools are so different than towns that most of them are pulling apart. So in the school finance part, so I mean, I know that it's a good idea to explore, but I've seen more drawbacks to it than successes.
I just would really encourage you to look for other systems instead of just saying, oh, it's gonna cost eighty thousand dollars more next year, sorry about that.
No, there's three or four other systems, they're cost just as much or more, they're of less quality. So it's not like we only looked at one, I mean, we're, we're smart business people too.
Did we put out an RFP for that?
Nope, not yet.
Are we going to?
I will ask them if they did, what they did, what they have, but I was not, I know the other sources and we've had experience with them and they're not good, so.
Well, I mean, if you put out an RFP and then you get back, you know, that might promote or have somebody do it and, and actually it might be something that, you know, sometimes if you get other school districts and you can get the same, you know, you can almost build a cot, uh, an off-the-shelf system that can be used by others and, you know, things like that. You know, if we can do it in healthcare, which has a, a lot more restrictions than even special ed, then it seems as if we ought to be able to build, you know, a, a system that could meet the needs of a lot of different, might be something that even DOE is interested in to offer for the other school districts.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, my, my question is, I mean, obviously there's costs that you know that you can't change, especially with labor costs and all of that, but there's things that you can look at and say, well,
Right.
if it goes to hell in a handbasket and we need to cut, so where does, where do we cut?
Yeah.
Um, obviously you've had custodial shortages, are things functioning custodial-wise that you can all of a sudden say, well, you know what, we had six people, but we've been functioning just fine and meeting the needs with four, so we'll, we can keep that at four, as opposed to trying to find more. Or, you know, in, in events like that, or, um, you know, looking at outside the box, well, we've always done it this way and this way it works and this, like, like the, the software program. There's got to be other, I mean, the, the world is filled with software companies, some good, some bad. I mean, I do my payroll for two people, you know, on a web-based service and everything's done there. I mean, there's opportunities out there to look and say, this is the box we've lived in, but now it's time to look outside the box. Because when you can't live within your means anymore, then you have to figure out what changes in your life.
Our, our, the corporation I work for has, has, uh, nine plants and other facilities in North America. And they, they, the product they use is Dayforce, but it's, it's, it manages everything. It, it manages benefits, it manages paytime off, it manages payroll. It, it does everything and it's all web-based.
Yeah.
You, you, now, obviously there's HR management involved, there's, you know, you have to have somebody that manages it and, and, uh, but, right, but, uh, uh, the individual, um, supervisors approve the, the payroll for the schedules that's in there and all that kind. Everything gets handled through that and it's all done via se- secure connection to the web.
Yeah.
For facilities scattered all across North America, including Canada, you know? So I, I know the, 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 uh, potential exists to have, to join more than one facility or one group together and maintain the security that you need to maintain.
Right.
Uh, because it, this system also does that, it maintains the, um, the, the separate LLCs are, are maintained within their little silos. And only the people that have, need to have access have the access. So I, I know there's capabilities to work together and so I think that, um, what I think Dawn was talking about, it's a great idea, let's, let's, let's try to expand the box.
Yeah.
See what we can do to try to, it, it may still cost eighty thousand dollars, but maybe we get two or three other entities to share the eighty thousand dollars. It doesn't cost just, you know, the five towns eighty thousand.
Yeah, and I'm, Stephanie is a good find too, because she's worked with three of the other systems that's, that are available to school systems for accounting software. And the one that we have and that we're going to are the best of the ones that she's worked with in terms of customer service, lack of glitches, potential positive, you know, savings on the other end, so.
So schools are restricted to just certain?
We have to use software that meshes with the DOE that allows those downloads and uploads to happen. And there's a lot of, uh, account, features and accounting features that are unique to schools that the software is need to be able to do, and only three that I know of have really, um, worked on designing a product to meet those needs.
So does DOE have a list of approved vendors that you get to choose from?
It has, uh, the DOE office will tell you which file types that they're compatible with.
So it's file type.
Do they have a vendor list that you have an option to choose from?
Um, I haven't seen a list like that, I haven't checked online, but when I sit in on those meetings, they'll tell us about that. They'll say, this one, this one, this one is contacted, we're working with them to make sure their programming matches what we need. Um, that kind of thing. So I don't know if there's a posted list online, but we can certainly ask.
Well, I was gonna say, that might be a good question.
Yes.
Because there may be some options that you don't know about that they have in their back pocket.
Yep, exactly.
As far as other, I think, I don't know if you were talking more about capital projects, big ticket items.
Yeah, I mean, big ticket items you've got looming in the future.
We've, we've, I think we've done a pretty good job with our ten-year plan of kind of smoothing out our capital expenditures and we used the, a bond a few years ago to kind of catch up. We had a lot of boiler issues and roof replacements that were, we never could have spread over just a few years, they had to be taken care of, so we used that bond to kind of get ahead of those big ticket items. And then these last few years, we've been able to keep that capital expense budget fairly level. And that takes care of big-ticket items, but not, not like, you know, half-million-dollar boilers and things like that.
We put together, the department heads and I put together a really comprehensive capital improvement program, brought it forward and recognize, you know, the top priority is a new sand and salt shed, which obviously affects everyone here. Um, but then as we're going along and we think we're good and we've got a plan, you know, Litchfield reaches out to us and means, what is it, a hundred thousand dollars? For the dam. And so, I mean, these things are things that you couldn't possibly be planning for, they just come and they, but you know, if that dam fails, it affects a lot of people. So those are the types of things that we're thinking of, but that salt and sand shed is still a priority. It has to happen before somebody gets hurt up there.
Yeah, no, we've, we've planned out those and even our buses, we've got a schedule for bus replacements, just like fire trucks and plow trucks to kind of plan for what their lifespan is and, you know, you kind of have to put aside the money, you know, gonna have a big expenditure one year and then nothing the next year, you know?
Right.
Kind of even that out, so that's what we, that's what we've tried to do.
John, last year we talked about, uh, and I'm not sure if we, I think we were gonna follow through after maybe the budget season and, you know, we just had life appear, but we talked about, because the interest rates are so low, if they're identifying some things that we might be better off using a bond for while the interest rates are low to get some of those projects done. I don't know, I, I mean, I don't know if there's any way to, first of all, to partner with one of our communities, you know, to, to, to have a bond or if it ha- I mean, that, that'd be a little administrative cumbersome, but, um, did we, did we follow up on maybe going with the bond since our other bond is, we've got some lower payments and taking advantage of lower interest rates?
Uh, not that I know of, and I think our, our capacity for managing projects this last year was, uh, extended way, way beyond what we could do, so I think we'd have to think about maybe in this next year, looking at doing that, um, if there's enough to warrant it.
Yeah.
W- with regard to the buses and other vehicles, I know, we, some twelve or so years ago, um, started a lease purchase, uh, replacement program in the town with regard to fire equipment and, and, uh, public works, equipment. And we've been doing that program now for twelve years and it's worked out very, very well, so we don't have to set aside capital reserves. We just, we have a, a certain, uh, dollar amount that's committed to every budget cycle and, and every three years, a vehicle gets paid off, basically, comes off the, the lease purchase. And then we replace another vehicle that needs to be replaced with that, and so the, 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 the amount of appropriation stays pretty consistent.
Yeah.
And the fleet stays consistent with the age that we feel is, is where it should be. So I just wondered if there's any opportunity for you to look at that type of program?
Yeah, we're, we're not leasing anymore, we've, we had a whole bunch of leases all coming up at the same time, we did purchase those afterwards, but now we're on a, a regular purchasing cycle and we do get, uh, state reimbursement for buses, no, and we try to get them for every time, but.
One or two a year.
Yeah, but no, we're on, we're on a cycle like that, so we're up and down all the time, yeah.
Good.
I've got a cou- a couple of Monmouth-specific things, and one of them is a thank you. Um, uh, just recently, we had the opportunity to invite the Maine Academic Decathlon State Competition to Monmouth Academy. we had the opportunity to invite the Maine Academic Decathlon State Competition to Monmouth Academy. And uh, uh, you folks were gracious enough to uh, allow us to use the building on Saturday, some Saturday in March, I've forgotten the exact date, but uh, um, uh, and it's all very tentative based on, you know, what people are gonna tolerate for, yeah, for COVID risk. So we understand that going in, but nonetheless, we appreciate your willingness to uh, to help us host that here. And I think um, that actually will, uh, I mean, there are certain benefits to being, you know.
The home team.
So uh, so thank you for that. Um, we also mentioned that the, the opposite hand room that we're sitting in, the room on the other side is sort of earmarked to become the office space for the recreation department, Monmouth's Recreation Department. And the ask that I have from RSU two is, we have a very unique situation in this part of Monmouth where we're surrounded by athletic fields and gymnasiums and everything. Uh, you know, all of the tools are right here. Um, again, we may have to wait for uh, the COVID tide to go out.
We don't, well, we don't actually, because all this, all the soccer stuff has happened on all our fields all fall. And all of our, our schools are being opened for all the rec programs for basketball uh, this winter. Just like they have all previous winters. We just finished discussing that last week, where we are setting some limits on uh, guests along with each kid to keep the crowd sizes within the limits there. But now we've always had our, we've always had the schools open for rec and then last year was it's different, a lot of things happened.
Sure.
Uh, in the schools, but this year, that is the plan.
Right.
As of right now.
So the soccer fields and the ball fields will be open to the rec for use when they're not scheduled for school use?
Soccer is, I know the ball fields, they, that's a separate thing, because that's Monmouth youth baseball, softball.
No, I'm talking about the high school field.
Well, I'm just saying, I think, I don't think the rec program wants to use our field because they use.
For baseball and softball, but for, for soccer.
Soccer, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Good.
So I'm just wondering what other things maybe we could encourage our rec department to collaborate on?
That's the big thing. We'd like to make the rec department, it's been my desire to have the recs be more than basketball and soccer. And have, have some more opportunities, not only just for children, but for adults.
Yes.
Well, there's, there's.
Oh, that's right.
There you go.
I don't, I think. Even though I was.
Hearing program.
So even though I was.
I'm not in charge of it anymore, but there is one.
But I, it's for adults. I, I, we need to have something to draw adults in and our, and to keep a, adults engaged and have activities for adults, because recreation goes far beyond children.
I've been playing volleyball with a group, we played here in the middle school for years and years and years, and we've been playing outside for the last, you know, few months, but we kind of came to the end of that with the daylight savings time and a little chilly weather, but.
So, you know. What's that?
The rec has a ski program.
Oh, yes, well, they, that, and then, of course, we have Chris Bryant, that
Well, yes.
In Missus Sheen My Yard. Yeah, so, I mean, but to have more of those programs available, there's things that, you know, the forefront there that we can add and, and um, encourage our rec program to, to expand.
So one of those really nice things that could benefit not only the community, but also the school and the students is a track.
Well, yeah.
Right? I mean, because that's a lot of older people that want, I mean, our, our students don't have a place to run and do things here in Monmouth. Um, and I know other communities may not either. I don't know what other communities have outside of here specifically, but I know our track folks don't have anything here and, and I know that having a track is a great place for, you know, community members, adults and whomever to be out there with, you know, with their kids or, you know, just having a specific place to go to, you know, that's safe and not on the roadways that they can utilize outside or even to be able to host activities, whether it's, uh, you know, starting off as a rec program and then, you know, building up and hosting activities. So I mean, I think that that's, you know, somewhere down the road, but that's been a conversation that I've heard here in my, my, my oldest was in track, but for the six years that we've lived here, it's been all this ongoing of what can we do about getting a track?
And that was our, like, number one thing. Number one.
But that just seems like it's, that'd be one of the areas that benefit, benefits the town and the school and the students. So could that be one of the areas like Dawn was saying, you know, is there a way to partner with the municipality where there's a benefit to both? And make something like that happen? I, I don't know, because I'm sure there's regulations all over the, you know.
I think we're, we're hoping, I think, we all are hoping that this area behind us at some point would be prime ground for a, for, for a track to go in. And my thought always was that if that happens, track and field is something that right now in, in the school lacks a track.
Yeah.
So, so that would be one thing where the, you know, RSU generously opens up uh, uh, the property they own for our rec programs, that we would generously open up the track to the RSU to use for student programs. And so, you know, I mean, that's a little bit down the road, but uh, but I definitely think that would be an awesome thing to, to do.
Yeah, well, my son was in track, they went to Beets.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, because.
The voters have been really, really appreciative of being able to vote in the gymnasium. It, everyone's well spaced out, uh, it's a very well-oiled operation in there. And we really appreciate being able to go there to vote.
Well, and I think we, when I was there and what I heard from those who are working is that people follow the guidelines that we ask to be in place. And so RSU appreciates that those were followed, because in Monmouth.
Well, you know, we all, all of us who are working were masked and most of the people who came through had a mask on. We can't turn people away from voting, obviously, for a mask, but it's, it was amazing how many people would comply with that.
Yeah, I mean, big sign and the people working there modeling, those are the key factors, so.
I think that's great, yeah.
We hope to stay there.
I think we've, we've used a lot of their time. Are we ready to let them go on their way?
I just want to say thank you for having us, because I think this is great. I mean, I'm always for information sharing and getting information and, you know, moving forward. And I hope that some of the other districts have this opportunity too, because I would certainly like to get to know other districts as well, but to hear what their town concerns are, because I think coming into this budget, and I would offer the same opportunity and invite representatives from them, their, the other communities to come to our budget meetings too, because I think it's really important to know, you know, what's on the pulse of the community. As we're trying to figure out what's on the pulse of what we need for our students and, and, you know, it's not like we're trying to begrudge the community and say, oh, taxpayers have to do it. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want to do it. Uh, but on the other hand, we have a job to do to look at what do our teachers and our students more importantly need in order to be successful. And as a community member, we want our kids to be successful, right? They're gonna be taken care of us, they're gonna be running our community and our schools in the future and our, in our town managers. So we want them to be successful. So how can we do this together? And not pit each other against each other.
But it's been a good uh, opportunity to get questions answered and information that we can share with people that ask us questions and and I, and I appreciate the non-confrontational atmosphere with that.
And I think the biggest thing, you know, for me that I'd like to see is some way to make uh, you know, vocational technology training more available to kids, because only allowing so many to go to it's, it's foolish. I mean, I had the opportunity several years back to go to a vocational school uh, and I think it was in Lowell, Massachusetts, that my cousin's husband was a teacher there and he passed away from cancer and they had the uh, reception afterwards there. And it's amazing, because they had a whole, the whole um, catering was done by their food department. They had a uh, um, automotive thing, they had a nursing, they had a um, uh, hair salon in there. I mean, you name it, it was in this building. And as we know, what do we need? We need tradespeople. Tradespeople are in dire demand. There's what, seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand truck drivers right now that are unfilled positions of trucking, you know. So it's crazy, you know, but how do you justify sending five kids to a program when we had an industrial arts program that any kid could take advantage of? And that's what, when I was in school, kept a lot of kids in school, is because they'd be down there wrenching on something with the teacher and they were in school, because they had something that piqued their interest. And to be able to have that program and, you know, um, make it available to the kids that want to be there and have the opportunity to go to it. I mean, it's a, something that's, I think, extremely important to to figure out a way to make that happen.
I completely agree. And one thing that I, I regret is that you have to choose. You know, kind of which, which path you want to be on. You have, you're gonna go to C A T C or not.
It's crazy.
And there's a lot of kids that would benefit from having some exposure to it without having to commit to, all right, I'm gonna be an electrician, but I want to learn these.
Well, exactly. And, and you know, it was part of your everyday program. You went down and Mrs. Duplessis taught you how to cook. You learned how to sew something, you learned just life skills. And what do a lot of kids lack today? Life skills. We had to have consumerism class where we learned to balance a checkbook. We learned how to shop for insurance. We learned about the stock market. We learned to be an adult. Before you graduated, you had to learn those things. I mean, and I, Mrs. Duplessis told me a story one time about a kid that would not eat in the classroom. She couldn't figure it out. She couldn't figure out what was wrong with this kid. This kid had never had a meal at a table and didn't know how to sit at a table and eat a meal. And they, she had to teach this kid how to do that, because they had always made whatever themselves and gone in their room. Now, for me, that's crazy. I sat at the dinner table every night. But, I mean, those are skills that kids need to learn. And, and I know how to read a tape measure, you know. Just things that are available. And it, whether it's a girl learning how to, you know, go work on a, on a lawnmower, it was very segregated when I was in school, because that's the way it was. But I mean, you look at the industry now and my father worked at Bath Iron Works. He has many women in the electric department as he did men. So you know, having that opportunity for kids to say, you know what? I, I don't want to go and pay a hundred thousand dollars a year for an education. I want to have a skill that I can go into an apprenticeship and move on, or go to the technical school and finish that. I mean, having that opportunity, I think, is extremely important. We're doing our kids a huge disservice that they can't figure out what they want to do. And they go to school and say, you know what, I hate this. And I've spent this money and now I'm not going to finish the program. You know, so having that opportunity, I think, really needs to be investigated.
Some of it was changes in the regulations too, and the certifications, like probably half the people that taught, you know, the automotive and the shopping, they weren't they weren't certified teachers back then, and they have to be.
Not necessarily for those specifics.
That's why they have centralized it to these.
The technical centers are amazing, because they do their, their own businesses with, you know, they're they're giving them real world experience, but we have limited numbers.
We would never have something like Massachusetts, but we would at least have programs that kids could go learn CAD design.
Right.
Kids could learn, um, you know, uh, how to be carpenter, yeah.
But I, I think, I think your point is that if you're not exposed to it in your backyard.
Then you don't.
Yeah, I mean, you have to have the opportunity to take this, you know, class and learn part of it and say, you know what? I just found what I want to do for the rest of my life.
You need to be able to see yourself there.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. And how do you, how do you know that unless you stumbled upon?
It's, it's one of the gaps of CTE, the CTE programs is get in there your junior year.
Yeah.
And by then, you know, you're kind of stuck with, what do I do? How do I fit all my classes in there? How do I fit in the rest of my requirements? Am I gonna finish being able to fulfill my college prep? Because it kind of cuts off there, like, how do I fulfill all those college prep requirements, especially if you're a late bloomer? Right? And then suddenly, what do I do? And so, and I know that that becomes a challenge. I mean, I've wanted to talk to my kid, my youngest, about trying to do something and he didn't until his junior year. And my oldest was trying to do something and had to wait until his junior year to do anything. So, I mean, it's just kind of a catch twenty-two all around.
That's a great point. It really should be flipped. It really should. You have access freshman and sophomore years, and then you decide whether you really want to pursue it or not.
I totally agree with you. It's just been one of those things that it's like, I can't get it out of my head, you know, but then you have to get that transition and get the whole entire CTE of DOE and all that flipped over. It's not an easy process, but it is one of those challenges for sure.
You know, last year, the, uh, I, I think Governor Mills, and it could have been somebody else, said that one of the focuses needed to be trades. And so, if you can go back to DOE and say, look, this is a, this is a focus of the administration, but we don't have the facility to be able
Right.
send enough kids that are interested to a place to actually get involved in this. Help us by you know, developing more opportunities.
Yeah, they did divert, I think, twenty million. Uh, there was a, uh, something passed last year that I just heard the update on it. They diverted twenty million for capital improvement to CTE centers, but that's not very big when you think of all of them.
Like what John said, it was the, it was the mid nineties when USM cut their program. That was the only place you would go to become a C, a shop teacher, a technology teacher. And that, so when you think about that generation of teachers, that means that they haven't graduated. Their most recent graduate, if they went right out of high school, was fifty years old today.
Well, that's.
That's something, so these programs are being lost around the state, not because of funding and not because of need, but because to be a teacher at the high school is a different certification than to be a teacher at a CTE.
Hmm.
And there's some emergency certification stuff that came through recently, but a lot of these places, a lot of places around the state had to cut those programs, because you're, you're right. You get the kid hooked for the CTE their freshman year, when they're working on him, on a lawnmower. When they get an opportunity to take their first cooking class, when they get it, when they get to see that light bulb.
Nail two boards together.
That's right.
They build a birdhouse.
You see the light bulb light up, because you managed to get the wires right and you didn't shock yourself, right? That's the, that's when the magic happens. And then you see down the road. So, yeah, it's, it's.
You might see more enrollment. There are enrollment if they would allow freshmen and sophomores, even by quarter or semester, however they do. I think the end, there's not as much pressure, honestly, I'll just tell you this, there's not as much pressure on a freshman, ninth grader to, to figure out what they're gonna be doing and how they're gonna get all their classes in, as there is on a junior and senior who are now trying to figure out, oh my God, I need to have all my ducks in a row and prepare for college, because, you know, I'm there now. I don't have room and time now, because that exploration happens so early.
Yeah.
You know, so.
The other thing we can do, you know, in a, in a small town where we can't have the big technical centers, trying to partner with some of our local trades people to get.
That was Ricky's, you know, forte. Ricky found those opportunities for kids to, to go. You know, people to do that. And, you know, there's.
Right. And that falls on, now, it falls on the school counselors to help facilitate.
So I wouldn't be doing my job as a town manager if I don't put in a plug for getting kids involved in municipal government from an early age. Because when I was growing up, the only thing I knew about in municipal government was police and firefighters. I did not know there was such a thing as a town manager, uh, town clerk, a code enforcement officer. And we're not seeing people coming, and, and you need to grab those kids in elementary school and let them start to know, oh, you want to be a lawyer someday? Well, did you know that you can be a municipal attorney? Or you want to be, you know, the boss someday? Did you know that you can do that in a community?
Well, and I think the only thing that exists for that is girls and boys state. And, um, you know, I, I, I was, you know, they picked five kids. Did you go?
One time. One time.
Five names in the hat and they pulled out two, and the third one was the alternate. And so my sister Dina got to go to Hassan and do all of that.
Yeah.
I was an alternate, and so my name wasn't drawn out of the hat, but I mean, that really, that's one of those programs that gets the kids, you you realize how this all happens, how the senate works, how the legislature works, how laws are passed. And you know, all of that, but I think.
I went to boys state. Back then, there was one person that got.
Went to girls state and.
Career exploration. There is a curriculum to follow, but admittedly, it crises rise to the top.
Well, exactly. And, you know, when I was in school, we had um Mrs. Morris, who we had an honors program, you took honors, and you know, she had all these requirements, but you were allowed to investigate what you wanted to do, and she would help you find. I mean, I went and spent a day with a dental hygienist and you know, I I had already been accepted, but I got to go and spend a day with her. Prior to that, I thought I wanted to be an interior designer and realized Ritz D cost a lot of money and I'd have to not live in Maine. So, you know, those are the things you figure out when you start investigating and looking into it and say, I don't want to sell rugs at Maxence, I want to design interiors homes. That's that's not going to happen in Monmouth me. I mean, on a very limited scale, so, you know, so those are the things that you have to have somebody that takes that and, you know, finds these ways for kids to be successful and, you know, do spend four years at a liberal arts college and then realize that you really wanted to be a carpenter and you should have spent.
Or you want to drive a plow truck.
Yeah.
It doesn't take a college degree to drive a plow truck. It doesn't take a college degree to be a code enforcement officer, so there are so many municipal positions.
That's right.
You know.
I just want to tell you that every meeting I go to administration, I just want to tell you, they're like, and we're so tired of hearing it doesn't take a college. I look, my son is there. I get it. I totally get it, but it's really funny that I'm like, I know. You know, you can't find a plumber for months on end and, you know, it's, it's so, you know.
So sixty per, is it sixty per twenty twenty-five? So sixty percent of the mains workforce will have a college degree by the year twenty twenty-five. We've been working for that toward the last three years, we're now.
So there's a, there's a balance that's trying to be glossed over that.
Yeah, yeah.
But even if you don't need a college degree, a four-year degree to do a trade or a work in municipal government, you should have two years of a program above high school that gives you some basics and things that you have to have to be, run a successful business.
Yeah.
Say, so you you need to have some some familiarity with with business, how to write a business plan, how to how to track basic accounting, that there's a, there's a lot of.
Manage people. But they have no idea how to manage.
Exactly, so, so you're right, you don't need a four-year degree to do everything, but two years in anything you do
Yeah.
is very, very helpful.
Yeah.
So the flip side of the, you know, the technical involvement at freshman and getting uh freshman sophomore years and getting them to to uh kids to exposure to to the trades and they might be interested in, is to also get them exposure to trades and they may say Because then they may refocus and say, hey, I'm going to give them a thought, another uh thought to a a business.
Right.
Or some other focus, and so, I don't want to be a carpenter, I don't want to be a mechanic, I don't want to be an electrician, I don't want to be a nurse, I don't want to be I don't.
And I think that's the things that we found out, you know, early on, and I mean, because you took shop classes as a freshman, I think, with Mr. Verrill. So, you know, you learned some valuable skills. And I learned a whole lot from Mrs. Dupussy, but I I mean, those, but you did, we started it young and then we started it as freshmen and sophomore, and then you kind of veered off and said, okay, well, all right. I'm, am I going to take more classes vocationally or am I going to take more college tiered classes? I mean, so, you know, having that early on, I think, is extremely important.
The tiers are, it's not tracked quite the same, but remember, like, these things that I think we all agree are really, really important. Those positions, either we don't have folks that are trained to do them and certified to do them, or it falls on a different position that isn't in our allocation of what's considered essential, right? So that, if if we as a district came and said, this is really important, and so we need a body in each school to be in charge of
That's right.
figuring out how to get into the classrooms and do it, and how to organize um opportunities for internships and da, 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 da. That's going to be one of those extra things that we're coming to the communities to say, this, we think this is fundamentally important to.
This is the local additional part.
We, as an RSU, as a board, decide, determine that this is something that we need. We need it for all our students, right? Because that's our obligation.
Right.
Well, and that's what really irked me early on in this whole RSU pro- process is we had all that sitting right here. We had a whole shop program, but they said, you know what? You can't have that, because nobody else does, as opposed to saying, you know what, you have that, let's bring some. Let's bring kids over to Monmouth.
Yeah, right.
Why do you disassemble a a functioning program? I mean, and that's what never made any sense.
Kind of build on Leanne's point. It it would be helpful to try to convince DOE that that they are part of the essential programs and services, that that is a part, so we don't have to go back to the community for everything. We can say.
It can't all be at a CTE center, there has to be.
So you can go to them and say, hey, look, we will be the experimental RSU, you have to help us with the funding. And see what they say.
Yeah, maybe like some grassroots efforts here too, you know, I mean, you'd have to create some sort of, you know, proposal-ish kind of ideas. I mean, and even for the university, I don't want to give them a bad name, that's not my intent, but they're getting better. We partner a lot with the community colleges, and we now try to use the terminology credential of value, because that could be a certification or some other credential that's not just a four-year degree. So, you know, I just want to make sure that everyone knows. So, you know, it's more of a joke that I sit there and do that, but I mean, it is very, it's it's very challenging. I mean, I look at the community colleges, Big P Brad, they went, you know, article today about their, you know, shortcomings and shortages and more importantly, how do we, you know, we have a a shrinking uh student K twelve population, right? Because our population is made in shrinking, so we are graduating fewer and fewer students in general every year. But our adult population, that doesn't, don't have credentials of value, right, or degrees or are working is larger. And so, or our skills are changing and the needs of our skills are changing. So how do we get those adults back to school? And that becomes more difficult, because we have responsibilities in daycare and family and bills and it it just becomes this flow of how how do we be creative about it? We we've aced the traditional college student. We have not done anything for what we can do for adults or, you know, I say adults, I know that our kids become adults at eighteen. How, you know, even some over eighteen-year-olds have responsibility for parents that are sick or for grandparents or, you know, maybe they're they're you know, coming out of DHS and, you know, they're emancipated, whatever the case is, they have, we we haven't figured out how to help in these non and more individualized situations.
Tanya, I want to thank you for helping to bring the two boards together. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
I knew an hour to drive. I mean, I don't know where he lives.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say, we really should let.
I live in Jav, I'm going to Eustis.
We have a place in Wyman Plantations.
You know, I I think it might be helpful if um we were to do this again, maybe deeper into the budget process, so uh once things start to congeal on your end.
We'll be meeting every week already.